Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, March 11th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Sarah Pelk. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have Bill Number 163. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in the total sum of $4,455.60 to AA Court Reporters for fire arbitration transcription services. Bill Number 164. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Pittsburgh Collision and Reconstruction Services, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $7,458.58 for professional services in connection with the lawsuit filed in Allegheny County Court of Common Plea. Bill Number 165. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 948, effective January 1 of 2004, as amended, entitled, "Adopting and approving the 2004 Capital Budget and approving the 2004 through 2009 Capital Improvement Program by reducing Fancourt Street Bridge by $7,000 and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan." This piece of legislation is sponsored by Councilman Daniel Lavelle. Bill Number 166. Resolution further amending Resolution 772 of 2012, effective January 1, 2013, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2013 Capital Budget and Approving the 2013 through 2018 Capital Improvement Program by reducing electronic daily activity sheets by $20,000 and in-car camera systems by $13,324.71 and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan." This bill also is sponsored by Councilman Daniel Lavelle. Bill Number 167. Resolution further amending Resolution 816 of 2015, effective December 2015, as amended, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and approving the 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program by reducing signage by $19,575.29 and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan." Bill Number 168. Resolution amending the Rules of Council, Rule 11, invoices to increase the departmental invoice maximum from $3,000 to $5,000. Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. Bill Number 145. Ordinance amending Ordinance 36 of 2019, amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct, Article III, Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals, by repealing Chapter 639, Crocodilians and Venomous Snakes, in its entirety, and adding a new Chapter 639, Crocodilian Species and Red-Eared Sliders, prohibiting the keeping, sale, exchange, adoption, and transfer of such animals in the city of Pittsburgh. This bill is sponsored by Councilman Bruce Kraus. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. We have Bill Number 157. Resolution amending Resolution 830 of 2018, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement to complete engineering design for a new multimodal connection of Hazelwood-Greenfield Four Mile Run with Oakland." Bill Number 158. Resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the city of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes certain property in 18th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh owned by Michael Gene Eldon at 320 Arlington Avenue, authorizing the payment or just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto. Bill Number 159. Resolution taking, appropriating, and condemning by the city of Pittsburgh for public roadway purposes certain property in 18th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh owned by 2826 Edwards Way and Associates, LLC, known as 322 to 324 Arlington Avenue, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto. Bill Number 181. Resolution authorizing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contract with the Kittleson team to conduct a parking and transportation demand management study for the Uptown Neighborhood, cost not to exceed $60,000, and this bill is sponsored by Councilman Daniel Lavelle. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair. We have a deferred paper, Bill Number 2019, 2249. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning, Article I, Section 902.03, zoning map, by changing from CP, Commercial Planned Unit Development, to UNC, Urban Neighborhood Commercial, for two parcels at a portion of two parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System in the 7th Ward, and changing from LNC, Local Neighborhood Commercial, to UNC, Urban Neighborhood Commercial, six parcels and a portion of two parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System in the 7th Ward. Urban Recreation Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair. We have Bill Number 156. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Digital Harbor Foundation to expand Rec. to Tech. programming into Jefferson Recreation Center, and further providing for an agreement not to exceed $10,000 for this stated purpose. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have Bill Number 19. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street. And Bill Number 141. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project, located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street in the city of Pittsburgh. That concludes the reading of the legislation today. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, March 11th, 2020. Our first order of business is public comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize. And when the red light comes on, your time is up. I would also like to remind everyone that Rules of Council state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted and order will be maintained at all times. Will the first speaker please come to the podium? Will the first speaker please come to the podium?
There's a little confusion. My name is Javon F. Brown and I live in the Hill District. I've come again to complain, to bring out some of the things that I have went through. I've been coming for over 20-something years and now it's gotten so that Mr. Burgess can tell me when Ms. Kraus starts talking during my three minutes for me to be quiet. I cannot talk to her and Mr. Kraus should be fined. He's got his computer while we talk, he works on a computer. They're supposed to listen to us, they don't know what we're talking about. See, what you need to understand, that we live in a neighborhood different from you. And Mr. Kraus, you're not supposed to be working on the computer. He should be fined $100 anytime he pushes that button. So let's watch and see if he pushes it, because he needs to pay a fine. Do you understand, they're not representing us, they represent themselves. It's only here in the United States that they make the police, that a police dog becomes a human being. Dog, God didn't put a dog over as human beings, especially you have to look at who's training the dogs, especially when you're training them with black hands and a white face. We told them that the black hands, that the dogs automatically jump at black people. No, no, they said they're looking at the face. No, they're looking at the hands, you know that. And they'll look at the face, that's how, we as a black person would never be able to kill a dog, police dog. But the white man did. Even in Wilkinsburg, they had that police dog. We found out he got killed, they did not put any armor on that dog at all. Nothing to protect him, instead if he had had it, it still would've got past there. No, we don't believe that. Those police should be charged anytime they don't protect their own policemen. They made the dog a policeman, so he should be protected too. I come down here every day, every time I can, possibly can, because we have a group that feel that they know more than what we do. If you listen to the radio, in fact, I wanted to say, Red Alert, 90.5 is having their fundraiser. I even sent, in the day I took and called him, because this radio station, Ariel and Sir, was able to tell me that we were having a meeting at the school board, which I couldn't find out. I was able to go and speak to the superintendent, to tell the superintendent how we, the black people, felt about him being hired. We felt that he shouldn't have been hired. He emboldished his, emboldished what he did. And I told him too, but you know something? I look at this man, I talked bad to him, told him he shouldn't have never been and he should be fired. Why did he go to Cuba? But when I came, when he came here the other day, I thanked him. He sent me a letter that said, "Thank you for coming and speaking, unlike yens." If I come down here, you act like you don't want me here, I'm gonna still keep coming. Because like my grandbabies say, this is where you're supposed to come, because we tell you what we need.
Thank you. Will the next speaker please come to the podium?
My name is Dawn Marie Smith. I live in Squirrel Hill and I'm here representing Just Harvest on the matter of the Giant Eagle at Shakespeare Street zoning change. When we spoke on this issue before council in December, we said that this zoning change wasn't in the best interest of the community, and that remains our opinion. The developer has made no changes or even loose commitments to changes that would adequately alleviate the impact of closing the Giant Eagle on the property for a minimum of 18 months. This closure would disrupt food access for residents of multiple low-income communities, increasing hardship for hundreds of WIC and thousands of food stamp shoppers, and disproportionately impacting Black Pittsburghers. In light of the developer's failure to address these concerns in an impactful way, we ask that the council reject the proposed zoning change.
Hello, my name is Josh Malloy, I'm from Garfield. I'm the Community Organizer for Pittsburghers for Public Transit. I would like to begin my statement by thanking Councilwoman Erica Strasburger on her leadership in gathering stakeholders from inside and outside of her district to ensure that, oh yeah, I'm talking about Giant Eagle Shakespeare, to ensure that all those who are affected by this development have a voice in making sure this would have the best possible outcome for them. I would like to thank Celeste from Pittsburgh United for her work in gathering consensus from advocates in what direction we should be demanding, of what we should be demanding of this developer. Without the work of Erica or Celeste, we would not be where we are today. We have moved the developer on the amount of affordable housing on the site. We have reduced the amount of parking on the site. We want infrastructure changes that would make the area safer for pedestrians and bikers as well. And they have also agreed to set aside an amount of money for transit passengers for residents who live on the site. These are incredible concessions from them and we would not have one unless it was from y'all's leadership. But what we are still not aware of is how we will make sure that people who have called Giant Eagle Home for the past 40-plus years are going to get food while it is closed down for redevelopment. If they, if we have, or a place to return once it reopens. You must understand that these are, there are many ways to cause harm and addressing some of our concerns with, while leaving others unanswered or inadequately answered will cause harm. Today, I'm sending a solidarity with Just Harvest and long-term shoppers at Giant Eagle in calling for a delay in the vote or a vote against approving the zoning change. It is not enough to say you will do these things. We need a method to ensure that, that what we have called for is enforceable and not just a promise from people who don't call at the Eastern Home and whose only stake in this development is the money they can draw out of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Good morning, my name is Celestia Scott. I'm the Housing Justice Organizer at Pittsburgh United. I stand with my comrades, we do work in coalition together. There's been a lot of energy around this development, around food justice, environmental justice, and housing justice being inextricably linked. I was in DC this past weekend protesting at HUD. We released a national platform that really is robust, the first national housing platform from grassroots organizations. And so, one of the things I said there was a quote from Audrey Lord about us not living single-issue lives and about housing not being a single-issue thing. So I stand here also in solidarity with my comrades. I know that you may have seen this letter and we understand this is a letter of intent. Our concern is that we were calling for this to be added into public record so that it would be enforceable, because we feel like council has the power here. We're very unsettled, of course, by the things that happened with Penn Plaza at the Planning Commission. Even though there was good intent and that was a horrible development, it still was able to be passed through. So that's a concern that we have here as a coalition. I'm also going to quickly read our housing demands, which are, we're very close to, and we're hoping that the dialogue stays open around housing, around transit, and also around the real equity piece we see for marginalized folks, which is food justice. We have a grocery store that will be closed for maybe over 18 months. We have disabled folks, we have veterans, we have children that will not be able to access food and water and WIC, and that's very important. That cannot be ignored. So when we talk about housing, when we talk about transit, when we talk about environmentalism, we're talking about all these things. We're talking about centering people in development. We're talking about development without displacement. We're talking about all of that. And so, I will try to quickly read this, I know I only have three minutes. So, we know we need at least 70 units of affordable housing at 50% area median income and below. And that's around $38,900 a year for a family of four. Right now, this project would give us 35. That means we're leaving 35 families without an affordable place to live in a neighborhood that has historically seen gentrification and displacement with a citywide shortage of 20,000 affordable units at 30% area median income and below. We are also calling for these units to remain affordable at these levels for at least 40 years. The development team has said they are open to dialogue, but we know the time is now to get a written, enforceable commitment that benefits all of our neighbors and community members. We are calling for at least 15% affordability at 2/3 of 50% area median income and 1/3 at the current small-area fair market rate for Shady Side, as well as 5% project-based vouchers, which allows deeper affordability and market rate units. And again, we've looked at these things, they do not affect bottom lines, but we also have not seen the pro forma. We know Hill CDC requires that. We think every development in our community should be able, and should have to, release the pro forma for us to be able to intervene as a community. So, in closing, I stand with Just Harvest, I stand with Pittsburghers for Public Transit, asking that you either hold the vote until we can get something enforceable and we look forward to the discussion at the table about this letter being able to be added into public record. Thank you.
Next speaker please.
Good morning, I'm Lauren Connolly. I'm the Executive Director of the Lawrenceville Corporation. Thank you for hearing me today. I'm here today to support the movement of funds into the Complete Streets initiatives, and specifically to support those funds being used for the Green Boulevard project in Lawrenceville. We began working on this project in 2009, so for over a decade, we've been waiting for our Green Boulevard in our community. As part of the Allegheny Vision Plan and Green Boulevard Plan, we've made recommendations for enhanced ecological systems, market-based land uses, neighborhood connections, open space, infrastructure, and pedestrian and transit opportunities. Through public and private partnerships, we've been able to implement elements of the plan and we're more than ready to see the Green Boulevard move forward. The Green Boulevard, as it can exist today, has the potential to connect our neighborhoods to the riverfront, unlock economic potential of our community, and reimagine our communities in Pittsburgh as a river city. The original plan called for commuter rail, but given issues with the railroad, we are now focused on creating a connected bike-ped path that will connect Lawrenceville with the strip and downtown neighborhoods, with potential for this to expand to other existing trails. We've leveraged private investment with private developers building out their own segments of the Green Boulevard, and we're appreciative that the city and Domi have stepped up to own and manage the project. The funds will make Green Boulevard a reality by creating a connection underneath the 40th Street Bridge that will ultimately connect to the existing trail at 43rd Street. As our community continues to grow, it's imperative that we secure publicly accessible riverfront space by building out the Green Boulevard that will encourage connectivity and mobility to and throughout the riverfront and river-adjacent communities. It will also provide safer connections for bikes and pedestrians. We want to thank the mayor, Councilwoman Gross, and Domi for their leadership and partnership on this project. We look forward to our continued work on this. We hope we're not working on it 10 years from now, but that it is in existence then. And we sincerely thank you in advance for your consideration and approval of these much-needed funds. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Hello, my name is Matthew Galuso. I am the President and CEO of Riverlife, we're a nonprofit organization with the mission to reclaim, restore, and promote Pittsburgh's riverfronts. For the past 20 years, we've overseen $132 million in investment in riverfront parks, trails, and public open spaces. This investment has catalyzed $4.2 billion in adjacent real estate development and economic activity. Beginning in 2009, Riverlife and our partners at the city, the URA, and within the neighborhoods, began a process to reimagine and redefine our relationship to the riverfront along the Allegheny River between the convention center downtown and up through Highland Park and Morningside. First through the Allegheny Riverfront Vision, and then through the Allegheny Riverfront Green Boulevard Plan, the planning efforts yielded community-oriented recommendations about real estate development, environmental reclamation, and open space, with specific attention paid to multimodal, non-motorized transportation. Known colloquially as the Green Boulevard, the idea is to create a dedicated corridor for bicycles, non-motorized vehicles, and pedestrians that extends from the Strip District through Lawrenceville and out toward the city's eastern edge. Hundreds of residents and stakeholders attended community meetings to express their support for the Green Boulevard. We're grateful for our partners in Lawrenceville who have continued to advance creative solutions to align with the recommendations and are incredibly excited about the mayor's commitment to Complete Streets and seeing the Green Boulevard's transportation alternatives become a reality, and the leadership of Councilwoman Gross is on this issue. We commend the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for elevating this as a priority, as evidenced by the proposed reallocation of funding to support construction and design at a keynote around the 40th Street Bridge, and we look forward to working with partners as this project moves forward. We respectfully request that council approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker please.
Hi, Dave Bringan, Executive Director of Lawrenceville United. I live in Lawrenceville. Just reiterating my colleagues, Lawrenceville Corporation and Riverlife, to say that, you know, residents in Lawrenceville also really support the Green Boulevard. It's, you know, we want to be creating alternatives to single occupancy vehicles in Lawrenceville, and this would be a really big step forward. So, totally supportive of that. Kind of on a related note, while I'm here, I wanted to speak to the zoning changes proposed for R1A to reduce the minimum parking requirement in R1A. I think this is related, that we want to be encouraging folks to get away from single occupancy vehicles as much as possible. Currently, developers, you know, building integral garages all over our old house neighborhoods is really disrupting the walkability of many of our streets. It's privatizing public on-street parking, and it's further encouraging, you know, residents to use single occupancy vehicles instead of public transit and other forms of transportation. So, I want to commend the city for doing it. I also want to point out that I do believe it does not go far enough, because the main driver frankly for developers, including these integral garages, is not the zoning code, to be honest. They go to the zoning board all the time to get variances for everything else. The main driver, as they understand it, and as I understand it from speaking to them, is that they believe their prospective buyers demand those off-street parking options. So I just want to, I want to commend council and the city for introducing it, and I think it's an important step forward, but I also want to point out that we need to do more and actually prevent frontage, front-facing integral garages in R1A neighborhoods. You know, our neighborhoods are set up so that, you know, there shouldn't be integral garages on the front. Our alleyways in the back should be really where we're accessing parking pads, garages, if you're lucky enough to have one. And I don't think that's in contradiction with reducing the minimum parking requirement, but we also need to just, because the maximum is still four. So, developers are going to still be able to get those front-facing integral garages by right. And also, just want to commend my colleagues and housing advocates for the Shakespeare Giant Eagle. The one thing that I'll just point out there is that there is a huge shortage of supply for Section 8 vouchers. If you're lucky enough to have a Section 8, we have a huge shortage of supply in that. So we really need to be getting more developers to include that. So I know for that 80% AMI, you know, if they can get additional units to be willing to accept the housing choice vouchers in that project, it's really important. So not, the 50%, you're good, but that 80%, I know there's like a little room, space between the voucher payment standard and that 80% AMI, and I think that makes an important difference, because it's something we're working on in Lawrenceville is to really try to increase voucher usage in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker please. Next speaker please. Seeing no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Eight members present.
The first committee for the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. First bill is 0142.
Bill 142. Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Compass Natural Gas Partners LP for the Lease of a Compressed Natural Gas Fueling System and Provision of Fuel for the Payment of $378,000.
Need a motion?
Motion to prove a discussion.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was the one that suggested recommitting this bill from yesterday. We discussed it last week. We had a volley of emails back and forth with the administrations. I'd like to ask OMB to come back up and see if there's more information that can help us understand why this bill looks to propose a net loss to the taxpayer on a lease for a compressed natural gas filling station. I hope I'm reviewing this, and just as a reminder in the discussion, we even had a series of emails going back last night. So I think it's still kind of open-ended and we're wondering if there's more information. So, if you want to introduce yourself and maybe give a better review than I just did, that'd be great.
Sure, Kevin Paulus, Director of Office Management and Budget.
Good morning, Sean Wagel, Superintendent with the Bureau of Environmental Services.
Good morning, Fleet Manager Brandon Walton, Office of Management and Budget.
Thank you, Director. Do you want to start? I mean, you were on all the emails that were going back and forth up until about 6 o'clock last night, so, so please.
Right, so what this would do is it would give us authorization to have a more accessible fueling station for the CNG trucks that we currently have in the Environmental Services Fleet. We have four more ordered in 2020 and we plan to order four more in each of the next two years. Right now, operationally, we feel it would help us achieve a lot of operational efficiencies. Sean and his team can only use the CNG trucks in half of the city, because we have two landfill locations, one in Monroeville, one in Imperial. There is no fueling station or site out towards the Monroeville side, so we can only use the CNG trucks in half of the city for the collection. the CNG trucks in half of the city for the collection routes. So as we continue down this road of recycling our older trucks out of the fleet that costs us a lot of money to repair and keep in functioning fashion, we need to have a more accessible site so that we are not limited to collection in half of the city.
Right, and so the question where we left it off at about 6:00 last night was that it still looked like what you're asking is that there are six CNG vehicles in a fleet of 60 refuse trucks?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. So that you're asking the taxpayer to pay about double what it's paying today for those six trucks to operate. So, and given that it's a three-year lease for $386, I'm not looking at my paper, I'm looking at you, so apologize, that's about $120,000 a year. And the last email that budget sent to all members shows it to, even with all of the staff time, even with there being less maintenance, even with paying, outright, you didn't fold in the cost of buying four more CNG trucks, but let's say, you know, let's say hypothetically they were free, which they're not, that you're looking, you're asking the taxpayer and you're asking council to approve an expenditure with my, you know, back-of-the-napkin math, back-of-the-envelope math, of about $120,000 a year to save $60,000 for as much as you could think of. You're talking like every minute of possible staff time that could possibly be, every extra vehicle mile traveled, every gallon of, you know, and to pay more at this leased facility than you're currently paying in Ferrywood. Did I read any of that wrong? Correct me if I got any of that wrong.
So we will be paying slightly more per gallon at the site, and we were able, through negotiations, to negotiate a lower lease payment per month, so after analysis.
That's all included in the arithmetic that I just talked about, right?
Right.
So that's everything that you can possibly think of, and yet it's still double the cost.
And the cost savings I provided in the memo QO on Friday was just, as of now, at the end, at this point of time with the 10 CNG trucks, what we would save with staff time. Obviously, as we continue to purchase more, that staff time savings will increase. But again, this is an investment that we can, that we feel will help operations, will make us more efficient, so at the end of the day, we felt it was a viable option to move forward with.
Well, am I inaccurate that you're not even approaching break-even of what the costs are in time or dollars today if we do nothing? You know, the break-even isn't for, at the end of the lease, until you're approaching something like 20 vehicles.
Right, if you're looking at dollars and cents, sure, we may not be quite at the break-even point, but again, we feel that the operational efficiencies that we would achieve would be worth it.
Are worth paying like an extra $200,000 over what if we do nothing? Literally out of the $386,000 resolution that you have in front of us today, that is for three years, it's such a huge loss in year one and two, at least, and that, and you're gambling on getting grants to buy the trucks in year two and three for free, right? You've cost it out, and you don't have full of those costs in, but, so there's additional costs, right? Because how much are one of these trucks?
They're about 25% more than a diesel truck.
Which is what, $2?
It averages to about $60,000 to $70,000 more per truck.
That's not my question. How much is a truck?
Oh, this year, they were $386,000.
Okay, so you want to not only lose $200,000 in, over if we do nothing today, then to even get a little bit close to not losing so much that we need to spend $1.2 million more in vehicles. And so, I mean, this question is really for the Equipment Leasing Authority, which I know Councilman Kraus is a member, and I talked to him over the last few days as well. And it may, you know what I'm guessing? That a couple of years ago, when we said, "Look, our particular matter is horrendous," and it is, "and I want to, I want the public to understand that we wouldn't even be having this discussion," except that for each one of these trucks, each one of our diesel trucks is like 100 cars on the road for each of its vehicle miles traveled, right? And so I just want everyone to understand that the motivation here is, this fleet is terrible, right? Our current diesel fleet is, no one's denying that it's absolutely horrendous, and we want to reduce our particular matter, and we all do. But as we heard, we're also trying to take those 100 cars off the road in other things that we're doing, right? And reduce the vehicle miles traveled for all kinds of vehicles in the city, not just our city vehicles. And we've electrified our car fleet, right? And so, again, I, you know, I'm not the Equipment Leasing Authority, I'm not OMB or DPW, but, you know, I only, I spent about five minutes Googling on my phone, and Los Angeles is going electric for its refuse vehicles, and New York is going electric for its refuse vehicles, and last week you told us those were at least three years out, but cities are buying them right now. And so what I'm assuming is that this seemed like the right option maybe four years ago when the plan was put in place, but we've kind of missed a curve here.
If I can add, so I've actually been meeting with different companies on electric vehicles, and New York is testing one with MAC right now, but it's not capable or 100% ready yet. They are still three to five years out. And in terms of the emissions reductions that we see with CNG, the city had a study done back in 2014 that showed our refuse fleet actually accounts for 4.8 tons of NOx emissions, as well as 3,650 metric tons of greenhouse gases. That's three times the amount that our next highest emissions vehicles produce. With the CNG, where we're going, if we continue on the path of buying the CNG vehicles, we're estimating, and we just actually put in for a grant with the county, that we can reduce emissions by 45 to 50% just in the next couple of years by continuing on the current path that we're on. Our biggest fear is if the CNG site that we're using right now closes, we have nowhere to fuel our vehicles. So the money that we've already invested, we lose, and any further grant opportunities or emissions reductions that we continue to go for, we also lose. We had no, we didn't know the other station was closed, and they just up and closed one day. Nobody's interested in buying it. We've had meetings with Peoples Gas and other companies. There's just not an interest.
Which one are you referring to?
The one in the Strip District that was right around the corner for us.
A seven-story building is about to be built on it, so there's that. So yes, it's not going to reopen.
No, it's not.
No. So this sounds like a rock and a hard place, but you're really asking the taxpayer to bite a big, you know, take a big bite here, hundreds of thousands of dollars of loss for these current, this current fleet of six vehicles. Is, I don't think it's the right time, though I understand that if the Ferrywood site, is that, so that's where they're fueling now, the CNG site, is, does anyone think it's going to close in the next year?
We don't know.
Okay, so we have six vehicles that may or may not have a place to fuel out of a fleet of 65. I just still think this lease is not good math, not by long shot. Over every single thing, I know that you sent several emails over the last week, and it has just, you know, it's pennies more savings. I mean, we can try to keep thinking, well, you know, how many right-hand turns are they taking or left-hand turns? I mean, you could try to keep eking out more savings, but it just doesn't even come close to the expenditure. You're asking us to double the expense of running these trucks for the next three years? That's what, that's the question on the table. Should we, instead of paying $120,000 over the next three years, should we pay $386,000? That's what the math looks like to me, so I'll see the floor.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
I just want to understand the lease a little better, because in your email that you sent, it says $8,000 a month, not the $10,000 that's been calculated. Is that true?
When we first originally got the quote, the lease was around the $10,000 amount. Through negotiations, we were able to negotiate a lower lease price in exchange for a slightly higher rate per gallon of consumption.
So that price is lower, it says $90,000 a year?
Yes.
So then, the other question, I was, so that cost is already lower, so I understand the goal is to get to, you know, that 2030 goal. And people in the, people in the East deserve better air quality, just like people in the West, so as we increase the amount of, like, fleet, you know, increase the numbers in the fleet, I would imagine that we'd be able to send those other places, and it could be used elsewhere in the city, so that would, you know, help with the air quality. But, you know, I had to look at this chart here where you calculate the driver time. That's a driver. I've never seen only one person on a compactor. Are there more than one individual on that compactor, and if so, it sounds like the cost would either double or triple, or the cost savings would double or triple?
The reason it was calculated that way, and Sean can speak to the actual operational, oftentimes when the driver will go to fuel, the helpers will stay behind. So if the truck has to fuel in the morning, you would achieve savings, or staff time savings as well, because then the helpers could not start their route as soon as they would, but if it happens half of the day, or even at the end of the day, maybe when they're on their way back from the Imperial landfill, those drivers are not with that, or those helpers are not with that driver. So that's why, to be conservative, quite frankly, I only included staff cost savings time for the driver.
So does that, I mean, how does that work into the workday? Does that mean that they work one more hour, one hour less?
In the way, go ahead.
Unfortunately, with it now, we're very limited where we can fuel, so we're trying our best to do it on the way to the landfill every day. Ideally, we're only making one trip to the landfill and requiring to fuel the vehicle one time. So that's why we have the one driver. If for some reason we were not able to get a full load of fuel, we maybe have to go in the middle of the day. With the CNG, it can be very unpredictable, and with the one fueling station, sometimes we are limited. If it's not working properly, we are not able to get a fuel, a full load of fuel in the vehicle, and that further reduces how productive we could be in the day.
That's helpful. So there will be a loss of, I guess since the monthly cost is lower and the gas price is slightly higher, so I don't know, I guess roughly it's $50,000 that we would, just like your calculation, we would be paying $50,000 more per year. How much we paying more per year for like, let's say, a net-zero building that we're going to go forward with?
I don't know. Off the top of my head, I can look into it.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering on how we get to that 2030 goal without really spending more money, because I was looking at some of those costs in some of these other briefings, and it seems like there will be a cost regardless of, you know, just in terms of getting to those 2030 goals. But, I mean, I do see the concern, but it does guarantee that we would have a fleet, that we would have a, you know, consistent delivery of that fuel, and then, you know, I guess that, you know, means that we could continually just trust that it will always be there and it wouldn't leave. Is that a gas station, is that a private, or public gas station in Ferrywood? Ferrywood?
Public. It's a public gas station. So we actually, we have to use our credit cards, our WEX credit cards are what we use there. And also having this fuel station would also, it would allow us to continue to grow the fleet, and that's kind of the important thing, which helps us reduce the emissions and could qualify us for further grants down the road that would allow us to build an RNG fueling station, which is the ultimate goal, which would be a completely renewable fuel.
Yeah, would that require renewable fuel on-site, like somewhere else in the city? Or is that, would that also be delivered?
That would also be delivered from the landfill.
All right, thanks.
Councilwoman Strasburg?
Thank you. Do you anticipate purchasing more CNG refuse vehicles in future years, next year, following years? Is there the need for that, for more vehicles, and if so, more CNG vehicles?
Until there's another viable option, yes.
Okay. And is it true that you are bound by city code to purchase, the ELA is bound by city code to purchase best available control technology when it comes to new vehicles, therefore the most environmentally responsible option?
I believe so.
I can answer that. You are. Counselors Deezee and Motznik passed that in the 90s. So CNG is not perfect. As I mentioned last week, fracking is a dirty business. It pollutes air and water, and, you know, the production part of fracking and getting gas to market is not perfect, but the emissions are much, much cleaner. Did you, in your calculations, calculate the cost to taxpayers of emergency room visits or resilience due to, resilience that's needed for the city due to climate change?
No.
So those are externalities currently that are not accounted for when we talk about the cost to taxpayers and the cost of new vehicles, or the cost to different types of upgrades. And frankly, that's not your fault, that's not anyone's fault, it's society, it's just the way that it works. Those are external rather than internalized costs. So as I see it, we're spending more money, yes, but what is the cost to, the real cost to taxpayers to continue on the same path with continuing to buy dirty diesel vehicles when we have the option to buy, not a perfect, but a cleaner vehicle, until the point when we can then, as mandated by code, ELA can then purchase the hybrid and eventually fully electric vehicles? So yes, it's an upfront cost now. I see it as literally a bridge to then the cleanest version of this, and that, you know, I'm confident that, given that it's part of city code, that you will then be forced to buy, stop buying CNG vehicles and buy truly clean vehicles when the time is right. So it's not a bridge to nowhere, it's actually a bridge to a cleaner source. So I'm in favor of spending the money. I know it's upfront costs, but we have to be chipping away at what we can do, let alone what the community can do to reduce climate change and to reduce air emissions, given that it's such a big problem in this region. Thank you.
Kevin, Sean, good to see one of my constituents here, and Brandon, thanks for being here. How many, so we have six CNG trucks in operation. How many did you plan to buy over the next year or two?
We have, we have four ordered.
Four ordered?
Yeah, that are on the way, that was part of the 2020 ELA plan. So that number will grow to 10.
And how much are they, per unit?
$386,000.
$386,000 compared to a traditional diesel that...
$312,000.
Oh, so it's not that much greater of a cost then, really. So I guess, I guess my real concern is, you know, I've been reading a lot, Councilwoman Gross has sent me some articles. It seems the way to really get on top of this is, as Councilwoman Strasburg said, is the electric vehicles. And I read a couple of articles, a guy in Brooklyn, you know, who was an old-timer, and he thought it was great, although, like you said, Brandon, there's some hitches to be worked out. How much would an electric vehicle, is there any cost that they can put on an electric garbage truck at this point?
At this point, it's estimated, and this is from actual companies making electric vehicles, not garbage trucks yet, but two to two and a half times the cost of the regular vehicle is what you're looking at for a battery-operated vehicle.
So we're talking there $800,000 or something.
Sometimes as high as three times.
Is that right? Yeah. So, and that's my next question. I know maybe the technology isn't quite there yet for electric. I did read the story on MAC and what they were doing. Obviously, once they perfect it, and hopefully, it happens sooner than later, I guess my question is, how long in the future are we going to, are we figuring to be CNG-driven trucks versus, are we just hopeful that it goes electric, or is that day coming, in your opinion?
I would say that that day, looking at the trends, is definitely coming, that we have electric garbage trucks available.
Right.
At this time, we have two brand-new 2019 CNG trucks, with four 2020 CNG trucks coming. We keep our garbage trucks for 15 years, at least. So we will be seeing...
I'm always behind the ones that are 15 years old, going up the Parkway, you know, out to Imperial, it's a, so, so we're looking at, when electric vehicles are on the market, I guess MAC would be the ones who should be, you know, giving me this figure, what they think they can mass-produce a MAC. Right now, Brandon, it may be $800,000, but if they can do it right and put it on an assembly line, much like Ford did so long ago, we're hoping that cost isn't quite as high, or will always be, in your opinion?
I think eventually the cost will go down as battery technology gets better, but at the moment, vehicles that are on mass-produced lines, such as the Chevy Bolt, Tesla's, Ford Focuses, they're all, at this time, two to two and a half times more expensive than the others.
And they're not even on the market. You can't even buy one if you wanted to, right?
The technology is just not quite there.
Right, right. How many miles per gallon do the CNG vehicles get as opposed to the traditional?
So the traditional diesel trucks get about 1.7 to 1.8 gallons, or miles per gallon.
Is that it?
The CNG vehicles get about...
That's probably a full load, I would, I don't know, that's really bad.
That's just the average based on the numbers that we use in the miles we've driven.
So CNG is worse? Is that what you're telling me?
The CNG is 3.5 miles per gallon.
Better gas mileage with the CNG.
It is. It is better.
As you do for a traditional diesel.
It's actually double.
Yeah, yeah. What's that? I'm sorry.
Can you go as far, do you get as much range?
Oh, yeah, no, that's okay. That's okay.
I don't have the fours.
The, the tanks, the tanks that are put on the CNG vehicles are, they're rated to get the diesel equivalent mileage, yes.
Okay, so, and, and my, my last thing is, even for now, so we're going to spend $380,000, that consists of building a gas station, basically. Right? I mean, we're going to put a tank in the ground. What's that, what does that look like?
It's a full mobile fueling station. It's actually on a tractor trailer. They deliver them. When they, when it's empty, they bring a new one.
You're not digging.
We're not digging.
This gas is portable.
It's completely portable. It takes a regular 110 outlet that you would use in your home. That's it. Everything else is self-contained and maintained by the company.
And that was my next question. Isn't there a system where we don't have to get that big? You know, we only have six trucks in the fleet and say, three of them stay over at the West End. Is there a smaller fueling station that we can purchase where, you know?
There's not a smaller fueling station that would work for that size vehicles that are being used that often. There are slow fill type things that you can put like at your home if you had a CNG pickup truck, but it would be just like charging an electric vehicle. It'd have to charge overnight and it would only get so much.
So we're going to pull a tractor trailer on city property in the strip district? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. My, my last thought is, you know, we only have six now. You're planning to buy four more.
We've already ordered four more.
Ordered four more.
Technically, we'll have 10. They'll be here September is, is the expected delivery date.
Okay, okay. So I was going to say, you could just keep all those trucks on that side of town? Or how many miles is it from the Ferrywood Station to the strip district? How much are we saving mileage, I guess? Or is it, is it more about congestion?
It's the operational limits. It's, it, we have a very old fleet right now. And when you severely limit what vehicles you can put where, it, it just makes the daily operations even worse.
We have 36 routes and with 10 of the vehicles being CNG coming up, that's a third of the fleet would be restricted to one part of the city.
Are the CNG and the traditional vehicles the same size? Are CNG vehicles smaller by any chance?
They're the same size.
Same size? Hold the same load?
And they hold the same load, yes.
Closest landfills are Imperial, which is kind of convenient for Ferrywood, right? And the other one is Monroeville.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I got. Thanks.
Do you have a discussion for first round? Councilman Cross?
So our budget director is also a member of the Equipment Leasing Authority Board. I think he has some light he could shed on this. And I asked Bill if he would come up and kind of maybe tailor the argument a little bit. Thanks, Bill.
Good morning, Bill Rubenek, City Council Budget Director, also Treasurer on the Equipment Leasing Authority Board. More I'll refer to, to some of the things, some of the knowledge that Brandon has. But overall, the councilwoman's correct about the cost. This is more of a long-term investment. And I've done a significant study and, and keep badgering Brandon with questions about electric refuse vehicles. Company called BYD, which is Chinese company, which we wouldn't purchase off of due to our rules in the LA, had the electric vehicles in, for a private company in both Tacoma and Seattle. Those vehicles, even though they're electric now, they still don't go far enough. I think they do about 50 to 60 miles, which wouldn't allow us to get to, back and forth to the fill. Also, I don't think they have the right size cab at this point, too. They only fit two, two folks as opposed to the, the three people, refuse workers we would need to have accommodated. So there's a long wait before we get there. Additionally, with the electric vehicles, we're also going to have to develop the infrastructure. There's going to be a large expense as well, too. We'll need the charging stations. We looked at a number of different options to try to make sure our CNG was maintained, mainly because of the pollution that these vehicles provide, as well to the amount of CO2 is just ridiculous. That's one of the questions I had. Typically in the winter time, how long does it take, Brandon, for our vehicles to become operational? They have to heat up first, warm up first, correct?
Yes, and Sean can probably speak to that a little better operationally.
So essentially, they sit there in idle, is it half hour to an hour?
With, with our Western Pennsylvania winters typically, yes. We've had a nice mild winter this year and we haven't had to do that. But typically, if it's in the negatives where we're coming in very early, start the vehicles, so they'll, they'll all start in function.
Sitting there spewing...
Unfortunately, yes.
Stuff in the same area. So that's, that's one of the things we want to get away from as well, too. So, long-term investment to, not only to, to save money potentially in the long term, I think it's, it was a worthwhile endeavor. Now, there are a couple of things I wish we would have done. I wish when the station initially closed, the CNG station, that we would have went to them and maybe used some, you know, something on the table that we have to try to get them to do a public-private partnership with us, maybe subsidize them to stay open to allow us to be able to continue to fuel there. That didn't happen. So we, we were sort of left flat-footed and had to look for a way. This is an innovative method to be able to find someone to bring in the mobile CNG to do it. Yeah, it costs money. But I think long-term, I think we're going to end up saving a, a good bit. Also, with the CNG vehicles versus our vehicles, the, you know, our current diesel vehicles long-term, my understanding was because they don't produce the dirt and oil and grime, that the engines actually last a little bit longer and are more efficient for a longer period of time than would be our typical diesel vehicles, correct?
Yeah, certainly.
Maintenance wise, we are, we are seeing the CNG vehicles last quite a while and not require the types of repairs that the diesel ones do.
And our fleet is not in good condition. I know that we just recently purchased three used diesel vehicles because we have problems with breakdowns. We need to get the trash off the streets. So, how old is our fleet? How many vehicles do we have that, that are, that should be out of service? The average lifespan is what, 10 years?
So, most municipal fleets' average lifespan's about 10 years. Once we hit 12 years, we're actually losing money based on the studies that I've done with the maintenance of the vehicles.
How many of those 12-year vehicles do you have?
A lot. We still have some 2002s that I think we just decommissioned this year. We have some 2004s still running, some fives and some sixes. So, we, we have a lot of vehicles. And, and these vehicles that are older that we have to, that we have to continue to maintain, they're actually pre-EPA, which they're actually dirtier than, than the diesel vehicles that they're selling nowadays.
So, Bill, we talked a little bit about hybrids and, you know, are there any hybrids on the market? I had some minor reservation about completely committing to all CNG or all-electric. And we talked a little bit about the possibility of having hybrid vehicles, but I don't think those are, are quite possible. Can you talk about that a little bit?
My research, I found some that were first on the market in 2014 and they were diesel hybrids. I don't know, Brandon, if you have looked at those at all as being a potential, because they, I, I think their fuel difference is about 30%. It's a 30% savings, which then would be exponential with CO2 emissions.
They, they, they are a little better. None of the, the companies that offer a truck that would work for our operations offer the hybrid. CNGs...
We have to, have to have the rear loader...
The rear loader, 25 yard, with the, the amount of weight that we carry, 66,000 pounds, the three-man cab with the low entry.
Our choice is basically, or stay stagnant where we are with diesel fuel, begin to transition using CNG with the possible hope of going electric at one point in time, when and if they become available and are cost efficient.
And I don't know if this is the, the right thing to do or not, but there has been a lot of grants offered by the shale industry in the state of Pennsylvania. I think $80 million went into the state for, for various grants, including stations and, and things like that. So I, I think those, those may, whether that's good or bad, these, these things may continue.
I think this is the source through which we are getting the grants. Am I misinformed?
We are getting grants to help pay for the trucks. We've gotten. The two that just went into service, we got grants for. It covered actually the entire cost of the upgrade to CNG. And then we applied again for the same grant this year. If we get approved for it, it's 25% of the cost of the vehicle. So it would cover the, the upgrade. And we don't qualify for any fueling site grants yet. You have to have at least 10 vehicles, which we'll have this year, so we can start applying for fueling site grants as well.
I see. Bill, thanks very much. I, you know, I will confess, I depend on Bill's expertise in this as a member of the LA Board. And he's much more versed in, you know, the makes and models and, and operations of certain vehicles. So I trust his judgment. I trust your judgment and I'll be happy to support today. Thank you.
Section on first round? Seeing none. Real quick for myself, I'll just reiterate Councilwoman Strasberg's points. I think she did a really good job of capitalizing what we're trying to do here. So thank you. And I'll just reiterate her points. Second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I also want to thank all council members for, for having this discussion, for recommitting this bill and having this kind of more full discussion than the one we had last week where we had some information that was incorrect and really not, I think, sharing with the public kind of all the kind of complicated and not great options, but all the different sides of this argument that we're trying to balance the dollar expenditures with the operational challenges that they're, we've really put DPW in a tough place to try to get garbage picked up, right? And that's, that's a shame, right? That the fleet has gotten to this point, that, and the staffing of the fleet and, and the logistics of daily operations, so trying to get garbage picked up with the challenge that we've set valid and publicly supported goals on reducing not just carbon emissions, but all of the particular matter and the, the goals of getting cleaner air and doing our part in, in trying to get there, just even within the city fleet. As we heard test, public testimony from this morning from my district, but I know from across the city, there's support as well to, for the city to do all of the things it can do to reduce all of the kinds of vehicles that are on the road, not just its own fleet, right? And so we heard just public testimony today, if you were probably in chambers to hear, that people are trying to build their neighborhoods in a way that helps them not need cars, that we, we change the way we've been doing business for the last dozens of, handful of decades, dozens and dozens of years in the way we do new construction or, or do our zoning and do our building requirements. And that we need to think about it differently if we're going to help people meet all their daily needs without having to get in a single-use vehicle especially, a single-occupant vehicle. So, I, I, I think this is an important conversation. I'm not entirely satisfied with this option that we have in front of us today. I, I do want to note that I am generally keen on these kind of prefab shipping container industrial, I'm just really fascinated by this. We've seen them be like new housing construction that was prefab that came in on shipping container in Lawrenceville for some of the Community Land Trust stuff. It came up in flatbed trucks and, and they kind of popped up the pieces of a building in the course of a day and it was really fascinating. You see, I've been tracking just in my spare policy reading time, my kind of, you know, study hall time, there are prefab sewage treatment units and shipping containers and water treatment plants and shipping containers. And there's a lot that you can do without having to build from scratch. And I'm really fascinated by that part. But I'm not sure, I'm still not sure it's worth the cost today. I understand that we're nervous about the Ferrywood plant closing. I understand that we need the kind of bigger radius or less time spent to, to get the, the trucks out, but, and I understand that you negotiated, this lease could have been even worse, is basically what your email said. Like you've got it to, I'm sure you spent some time to get it done to $386,000 over three years. And then I think the numbers you gave us, it would have been more like 450 or 425. So, you know, you got 50,000 off over three years. But it's still eating a chunk to support this fleet. And I, I'd want to reiterate, I understand that in the 1990s, we put this challenge in front of the Equipment Leasing Authority, which again, we keep saying ELA, just like there's a parking authority and a development authority and a stadium authority and a water authority. There's also now even an authority just to buy trucks. Maybe, maybe there should, maybe there shouldn't be. I don't know. So, but, but all the dollars are just coming straight out of the city treasury. It's not like the Equipment Leasing Authority has its own revenue source or anything like that. Am I right? So, that's why you need council to say yes. Go spend $386,000 for this three-year lease to service right now. Six trucks and 10 trucks will be in hand. Four more trucks will be in hand soon. But then, the proposal to even get it to net zero over what we're doing now, again, to cash, to just not be doubling the money we're spending per truck is to try to get grants to get that fleet up to about 20. I'm still kind of sticking with that number in my head on the kind of back of the envelope. And that means spending, I think you got, you wasn't, you quoted me a number at around 400,000, but it sounded like it was more like 500,000 or 600,000 for, for a new CNG truck?
386,000.
Yeah, so 400,000, yeah.
It's less than that once the grant funding comes back.
Okay, so, it's many, many more millions of dollars that adds up, right? So the four that we're buying now is like 1.6 million, not 1.2 million. And, you know, hopefully we'll get grants. And I want to acknowledge too, I do think that part of the reasons I have more misgivings maybe than others is this, that we look like we're supporting the fracking industry in Pennsylvania by doing this. Right? There's an element of that here, that, you know, the state grants are kind of there to help prop up this industry or, or, you know, increase local consumption of this fracking-produced natural gas. And, and that might, that I think is probably why I spent a little extra time reading this a little more extra carefully and running the numbers myself, or scribbling out the numbers myself. So I just want to acknowledge that. I do think that's part of my, my misgivings. So, I'm not comfortable with this today. I do think it's an important conversation. So again, I appreciate council members all engaging on it. And I think it's a conversation that should continue. And so I'm not supportive today. And maybe we just need to have a little more conversation to get to where we feel like the public understands these choices that we're faced with and to get their feedback on the, on making these choices. Because it's definitely, it's giving, it's giving me some concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Yeah, you know, my, my gut tells me, and this doesn't mean much because I'm not in your business and you know better than I do, but, you know, I hate to throw money at technology when the technology is changing. And what I mean by changing is electric, you know? I feel like, you know, the, the real answer here is electric. Do you agree with that? For emissions.
I think that the future is, is electric. I don't think it's the near future in terms of less than three to five years.
Yeah, you, you're pretty convinced of that, Brandon, because a couple of articles I read, you know, they, of course, they, oh, we're going to be big dreamers and hope they get this on the assembly line quickly. But in reality, I, you're probably right, I would say. But, and this, this may be a silly question, but since the new gas station is going to be portable, why can't we just have a portable gas station that drives from the East End and drives over this way and fills the trucks up?
So it's mobile, but it's, it's, it's not that mobile in terms of...
But it's on wheels.
It is on wheels, but it's not, it's not meant to, to move. It actually takes two pieces, so that one trailer holds all the gas. That's what gets swapped out and then...
It's not like an 18-wheeler. We could just drive it over to the East End, fill the trucks up there and then back to the West for...
No, it's, it's listed as a mobile station just because the ease of moving it if you needed to. So it's, it's not permanent at all.
Okay, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One, one opposed, one abstention.
It actually gets a favor, it actually gets a...
Affirmative recommendation to Tuesday's...
Tuesday's meeting.
Yes. It's four to two.
The numbers in there?
Thank you. No, he stepped out.
Moving on to supplemental new papers, Bill 195. Thank you all.
Because it's not a final vote.
Yeah, I know.
It is a majority of those persons.
And I, okay.
Bruce, one, two, three, four. So, we got five, one and one. So, Bruce register, yes. So, you got five, one and one. So, it's affirmative. Okay. Bill number 195, resolution further amending resolution number 797 by reducing Smallman Street reconstruction by 473,374 dollars and 38 cents and increasing complete streets by 473,374 dollars and 38 cents.
Need a motion?
Um, motion.
Bill 195.
Motion to approve.
Second. We just got through the first bill. Are you happy?
Second. Oh, wait, I motion to approve. Someone seconded.
Seconded.
Bruce seconded.
Yep, happy to support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved.
Bill number 199, resolution further amending resolution number 863 by amending city council, CDBG unspecified local option line items, reducing Save a Life Today Pittsburgh by $8,000 and increasing Birmingham Foundation and Save a Life Today Pittsburgh by $8,000 and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I believe this is just council president moving CDBG out of within her district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 162.
Bill 162. The mayor is hereby authorized to issue and the city controller to countersign three warrants in a total sum of $19,000 made payable to Ermend Bucina in full satisfaction of all claims, including but not limited to claims for any alleged loss compensation and in full satisfaction of all other claims, $4,750 to Mr. Buciana Legal Counsel Wyman and Bagan as final settlement related to the action filed with the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended.
Bill number 163, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the total sum of $4,455 and 60 cents to AA Court Reporters for fire arbitration transcription services.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is affirmatively recommended.
Bill number 164, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Pittsburgh collision and reconstruction services in an amount not to exceed $7,458 for professional services in connection with a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is affirmatively recommended. Can, can the clerk please read bills 165, 166, 167 together as well as bill 181 on page seven? They're all connected.
Bill 165, resolution further amending resolution number 948 by reducing Fan Court Street Bridge by $7,000 and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan. Bill number 166, resolution further amending resolution number 772 by reducing electronic daily activity sheet by $20,000 and in-car camera system by $13,424 and 71 cents and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan. Bill number 167, resolution further amending resolution number 816 by reducing signage by $19,575 and 29 cents and transferring those funds to the Uptown Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan. Bill number 181, resolution authorizing the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contract with the Kittleson team to conduct a park and transportation demand management study for the Uptown neighborhood in a cost not to exceed $60,000.
Need a motion for all bills?
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is, so, the fact may, bill 181 allows us to enter into the contract. However, we realize we were actually short all the necessary funds for them to perform the contract. So, the other bills are closing out old projects that had leftover dollars, moving them so that they can actually then perform the contract.
Happy to help.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All bills are recommended. Last bill under this committee, 168.
Bill 168, resolution amend the rules of council, rule 11 invoices to increase the departmental invoice maximum from $3,000 to $5,000.
A motion to approve, very brief discussion.
Need a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm not sure where we dropped the ball, but the bill's sponsored by myself and Councilwoman Cale Smith both. And this raises the threshold by which we have to enter into a procurement agreement from 3,000 to 5,000. And it's supported by myself and, and of course, the council president. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is affirmatively recommended. That takes us to the invoices. May I have a motion for the invoices?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Bill, invoices are approved. We do have P cards that are before council, so I need a motion for the P cards.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Bill is approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by Mr. O'Connor.
Bill 145, ordinance amended, ordinance number 36 of 2019, amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, conduct Article III, dogs, cats, and other animals by repealing Chapter 639 in its entirety and adding a new Chapter 639.
Motion hold one week, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Cargill. First bill was 157, and I do believe Councilman O'Connor requested a one-week hold.
Yes, for one, for one week, right.
Bill 157, resolution amending resolution 830, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to complete engineering design for a multi-modular connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland to provide for a specific payee and authorize an increase to the project cost to afford in additional design services within the scope of work not to exceed a total of $1,416,543, an increase of $69,896 and 33 cents.
Motion to hold for one week at the request of Councilman O'Connor. I think he had a meeting or two. He had to work out some details.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week. Bill 158.
Bill 158, resolution taking appropriating and condemning by the city for public railway purposes certain property in the 18th Ward owned by Michael Glenn Eldon and known as 320 Arlington Avenue, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. Bill 159.
Bill 159, resolution taking appropriating and condemning by the city for public railway purposes certain property in the 18th Ward by 2826 Edwards Way and Associates LLC and known as 322 through 324 Arlington Avenue, authorizing the payment of just compensation and necessary and incidental acquisition costs related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That'll take us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill number 2249, ordinance amended Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning Article One, Section 90203 zoning map by changing from CP Commercial Plan Unit Development to UNC Urban Neighborhood Commercial, two parcels and a portion of two parcels in the Allegheny County Lot and Block System 7th Ward and changing from LNC Local Neighborhood Commercial to UNC Urban Neighborhood Commercial, six parcels and a portion of two parcels in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System 7th Ward.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Um, it was motion and second, so it's actually with Mr. Cargill?
I want to defer to the council.
Yeah, I want to defer to the council.
I'm sorry, Erica. Yeah, I defer to Eric.
Councilwoman Strasberg? I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. So, this is, this is an issue, a development that is being proposed that many of you are familiar with because there was a public meeting, a public hearing, excuse me, held December 17th of, of last year. And at that public hearing, I asked to slow down the process further and allow for additional meetings to happen. But just as a, as a refresher, this is a, this is the, known as the Shakespeare or Shady Hill Giant Eagle site at the corner of Shady and Penn. And, and it actually sits in Shadyside, which is in District 8. But it's right at the intersection of Shadyside, Larimer, and East Liberty. And the Giant Eagle and the plaza is utilized by an even wider range of communities, including Lincoln, Leamington, and Homewood, and Larimer and East Liberty and others. And so, it was really important for me through this entire process to engage with a wide variety of stakeholders that are impacted by this proposal. And so, our office has been engaging with residents and business owners and community groups since 2018, really, and have worked with a core group of organizations, some of whom are represented today, to host a series of community meetings throughout 2019 that had really fantastic turnout. And a lot of information was gathered at those meetings. And so, while we have not reached, we're far from the end of this process. I mean, it's still going to have to go through a design review and through planning commission and through the zoning board of adjustment. This is really just the rezoning of the partial, parcel. That said, you know, I understand the desire to get some commitments for the project that is assumed to be, you know, related to the rezoning of this parcel and have been working through those in, over the last couple of months. A significant amount of time was spent actually in, with the law department reviewing some of the commitments that the, the development team is willing to make. And I'll just go through some of those commitments now. But what was found by the law department was that as much as we desired to attach something to this legislation to really memorialize it here, this is not the place for it. The place for some sort of condition to be attached is at the planning commission through design review, which the development team is committed to, to doing. We wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to jeopardize the whole rezoning and this whole process by a potential lawsuit in the future if, if we just followed the incorrect process. So, you know, among the items that are being committed to are that 15% of the plus or minus 230 apartment units will be affordable, 10% at the 50% AMI, air median income level, and 5% additional at the 80% AMI level. So, 15% total. Yes, there are some details to be worked out around that, but that's the commitment. In addition, housing choice vouchers will be accepted at all units. And the housing affordability will, will be in place for no less than 35 years. This is pretty unprecedented in the city, in part because no tax abatements or subsidies are being, are being taken by the development team. On transportation, the, the housing developer has, will establish a fund of at least $50,000 for the purchase of transit passes for the residents there. I know that there are those who want that number to go up. We'll continue the conversation, but $50,000 for the purchase of transit passes for, for the residents of the future apartments here. In addition, they're going to be building a new bus stop, relocating the bus stop on Penn Avenue, and actually building it as integral to the development as a sheltered bus stop. So, improving the experience of those who take transit. Originally, the, the parking proposal was upwards of 600 parking spaces in the garage that's proposed. Now, it's down to 420. So, a 30% reduction there. And they're partnering with Domi to make a substantial pedestrian improvement of the intersection at Shady and Ellsworth. So, a better pedestrian experience at this really busy spot right outside of the East Liberty Transit Station. We heard a lot today about food access. It's a huge priority, I think, of, of mine and of a lot of people. No doubt during construction, there is going to be a disruption for about 18 months for people who are accustomed to driving, taking the bus, walking to this Giant Eagle. And that's a big, big deal. And that's not just for groceries. It's also for, for pharmacy. Already, the commitment is a temporary pharmacy across the street in the, in the shady, in the Trader Joe's parking lot essentially, is what we're expecting for a pharmacy location. And then, there are additional details that need to be worked out between Giant Eagle and the communities who rely on this Giant Eagle. Some ideas that have been floated have been shuttle services, waiving of a fee of online ordering and delivery, a, you know, drop-off delivery options at certain meeting locations, low-cost rideshare options, and other ideas. And so, I am taking it very seriously to, to continue to work with Giant Eagle to ensure that they are not just committing to things that really won't work in practice, but actually working with communities to get the feedback, to understand what really will work during construction. And then after construction is done, what will make sure that the same customer, customer base feels comfortable coming back to this Giant Eagle. That's really important to me and I want to continue that conversation with community organizations all around this, this Giant Eagle. Additionally, around quality of life issues, the, the team is committed to building a parklet of about 17,000 square feet. So, there'll be some more green space added to the community, which will, you know, be open to anyone, not just people who are using the, the plaza. So, those are some of the items that have been committed to already. Like I said, the actual commitments will come out and be conditions that will be bound, legally bound during the planning commission phase. This is just sort of what we've been discussing and, you know, it's been promised. And we're going to hold developers to that. So, I do want to thank all of the stakeholders, the neighbors, the advocates who continue to push for what's right for Pittsburghers, and really appreciate your efforts and advocacy and just, I assure you that we're going to continue this process and this conversation. I acknowledge not everyone is getting what they want right now. That's what a process is. Sometimes we get part of what we want, but we're not done with the process. And that's the main point I want to make. We're still really at the beginning, even though it's been two years since we started working on this. But I also want to thank the development team, Echo Realty, Gray Star, and Giant Eagle for their willingness to engage up until this point and having this ongoing discussion about how the development project can best reflect the needs of the community. So, like I said, planning commission, zoning board of adjustment, still to come, still lots of conversations, conversations to be had. And I would appreciate, you know, your support today to, to pass this rezoning, to allow us to then get to the next phase where we can really dig into the details even more and advance this conversation.
Thank you. Councilman Gross?
Just very briefly, I just want to recognize and commend the councilwoman for working through what is a very challenging situation and doing it with such great character. So, I know how difficult it has been. I'm happy to support and just want to reiterate how much we appreciate you taking the lead on this because I know it's a, it's a very challenging time. So, thank you.
Thank you. I was busy taking, you know, there's a lot of different moving parts. So, thank you, councilwomen, for bringing us up to date, but also for, I think, helping all of us. What we're trying to do is really move the bar about what we expect from developments and the neighborhoods, right? But I think we're finally at the moment where we all acknowledge that not every development is a good development. And it really takes partnership from many sides of the table, from the public sector, from the, our advocacy community and the development community and council to really think through what are the needs in a particular neighborhood or for a particular site. I wish that our zoning process was more supportive of achieving these goals, right? So, we're still stuck in this hard place. And I've been through it many times in my district as well, where the zoning is unrelated to neighborhood needs. And that's really, to me, not the way land use and zoning is supposed to be. It should be reflective of what the actual neighborhood desires and needs are in a site. If neighborhoods need grocery stores, how do we build that into the zoning code and not just have this kind of like, well, you're allowed to have this much height and this much width and this much parking and this much of that. That's not good enough for the city that we're trying to build. It was good enough when no one built anything. And the only person building anything was actually the URA or the city building it itself. And so, we're still at this challenge where we're trying to build something that's going to work, that it's going to last, that is really... to work, that it's going to last, that is really, not just meeting the needs of the neighborhood, but especially when there are multiple sites, as there can be, on the heels of one another. You don't know when one of those parcels that's underbuilt across the street is suddenly going to sell and the one next to it and the one next to it. That how do we kind of make sure that what ends up in place is not the same cookie cutter development that we put in place that's allowed by zoning code? And if you get 20 of them next door to each other, guess what? The neighborhood's dismantled, basically, right? All of the local neighborhood-serving businesses have been demolished, or there's no, as I always say, and you've heard me say many times, so forgive me for saying it again, you know, a neighborhood, neighborhood-serving businesses are, and the reason I think people choose our neighborhoods that do still have a commercial core is because your life is a little easier when you have like a dentist and a daycare and a drugstore, and you can get food and you have food access. These are the things that we need, right? And if we're going to build a city where you don't need your single-use, your occupant vehicle or whatever we're calling it, you need that 15-minute walkable neighborhood and you need to build the space where it can be and make sure that when people buy a piece of property and have rights for development, that we have built in what the neighborhood has rights to, and we just aren't there. Having said that, I mean, I'll be supportive today, but I am concerned that we don't have these, I know you're working with a lot of permanent councilwomen, Strasburgers, so I'm happy to talk to you about it after today's session. How do we get these conditions to a place where they are legally required? I mean, we've used them in my district at the zoning board as well. So am I correct that this was already approved, or it doesn't need to go to ZBA because it's not a variance, right? And so this is just only in the discussion at the council table. I'm reminded of Councilman Lavelle's conditions that he put on a zoning amendment, which was amending the master plan at the UPMC one. So if you want to speak to that a little bit, or if you want to, we can talk about it afterward as well, but please do.
Sure. So, I mean, I think comparing it to the Uptown Mercy site was a little bit apples and oranges because that had already been a recommendation and conditions that had been set by the Planning Commission for an amendment to an institutional master plan. So slightly different process.
It's referred by planning.
Planning to us. This is a rezoning of the parcel, so is to, like, by law, we are to consider a certain number of criteria, and conditions put upon that would be outside of the scope of what we're, as we as council members, are meant to consider. And so the fear is that someone could come out of nowhere, sue us, and we don't have pro bono attorneys ready to represent us on this, and we'd have to spend time and more money defending this. So I agree with you that our zoning does not, our zoning process does not match what community needs are, and we need to change that. I've gotten the verbal commitment, which I know is not, and we've put it in writing and an email, but I know is not making everyone feel as comfortable as they could, but the verbal commitment from the development team here today that, you know, they will, what they have put in writing to members of the community who have engaged and stakeholders, they will commit to putting in writing as a legally binding agreement and conditions at Planning Commission. And if that's also ZBA, because they, as I understand it, they will be going for variances, then that is another vehicle to attach conditions.
We have used that in Lawrenceville, and it's worked. And the developer has supported, and everybody's happy. You know, the development's up and the neighborhood feels confident that they got what they needed. It was also a long, difficult process, but I appreciate it. And I think we have more to share, so, I mean, we don't need to take up time in the meeting, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes. I don't have these development issues in my neighborhood, nor do I want them, but sure, go ahead.
May I please register and I vote I have to step away? I apologize.
Thank you. Thanks, Anthony.
Yeah, you got it, you got it. But Councilwoman Strasburger, it sounds like you did a lot of work on this. Seems like you pretty much have everything covered. And like you said, you're not going to make, not everybody's going to be happy with the total outcome. But a few things struck me as to $50,000 in transit. You have the developer putting up for, and that's for the residents of?
The bus station.
Yeah, right. Is that right? So until that runs out, that's a one-time $50,000, and when that runs out with the Port Authority, I guess it's over?
I have a, the, the detail's not been hammered out, and it's at least $50,000 that has been committed. And so I think that the types of details that are options to work out here are, you know, and now that the Port Authority is allowing for bulk purchases, is there a bulk rate that could be leveraged here and applied to this project? Could it be applied to not just Port Authority transit, but other types of transit like bike share? Could it be applied to? So there are questions about that. And, you know, as of now, it's a one-time sort of commitment, or it's not, you know, $50,000 per year, what they're saying, but to encourage transit use since it is literally right next door to the transit station.
I think that's fantastic to negotiate. I've not seen, maybe that's happened in Councilwoman Gross's district or others, but I've not seen a developer put up transit funds before. Seems like a very, you know, interesting thing to do. And I guess my follow-up question to that was, will they be available to the affordable housing people or the complex overall?
Everyone.
Got it. Okay, good, good. And I love the parklet, and it's open to the public that they've agreed to build. And one last thing is, I think, what you hit on, which I'm glad to hear you, is people, you know, as you said, about 18 months before, when this thing gets started, before its end date, people get in habits. And I've seen it happen in other neighborhoods where they get in the habit of going to another grocery store, and all of a sudden you got this brand-new shiny grocery store that's open, and everybody's kind of in the habit of going somewhere else. So I'm glad to hear that you're concentrated, you know, you're all thinking of that. And, yeah, I'm happy to support, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Burgess?
Couple things. First of all, certainly I will vote in the affirmative for this legislation. I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger for her lead, and we've been supportive of this effort. I want to say a couple things, that this grocery store, although in Shadyside, is also one of the primary grocery stores for many of the communities I represent. In fact, I was there this morning on my way here, is my pharmacy, and so my family's pharmacy, and I grew up shopping in that store, and so it has, although not in my district, it's right across the street, and so we share its resources. I do not want anyone to miss this moment, though, that this developer committing 15% of affordable housing is unprecedented in our city. And if you look at all the stuff that happened in the Strip District, if we had done the same thing in the Strip District, if we had appointed 15% of affordable housing to all that market rate development and residential stuff in the Strip and in Lawrenceville, we would have made a significant dent in affordable housing in the city, number one, and changed the lives of those people. And so I want to, to not, the Affordable Housing Task Force, I believe, called for 10% affordable housing, and this goes beyond that. And with no government subsidy, I think the developers should be commended for that. And so there's two other things I want to say at this moment, though. The reason this conversation has been so important, and I always get, always get, always interests me when I hear people from other communities want to compare themselves to the communities I represent, right? You know, they view themselves, even though they're middle-class neighborhoods, they oftentimes want to, you know, they want to view themselves as similar to my neighborhoods, which is very interesting because they don't know my neighborhoods at all. In Homewood, there is no grocery store. There is no grocery store in Homewood. There is no drugstore in Homewood. There is one gas station in Homewood that's at the last, it's on the last parcel before you're not in Homewood, nowhere near where the residents live. In Lincoln-Lemington, there is no grocery store. There is no drugstore. There's no gas station, except in the fringe, again, of the block, mostly. In Larimer, there is no grocery store. There is no drugstore. And I can go down the road. Not only is there no drugstore, there's no clothing store. There's no fruit market. There's no shoe store. There's no sit-down restaurant. And the average income of those neighborhoods are half of those of the middle-class people who want their resources. It's interesting to me, when we go down this road, that they often want to compare themselves to these neighborhoods without actually looking at those neighborhoods. The second thing, and the last thing I will say at this moment, is this, and this is pretty much going to guide me, I believe in the free exchange of ideas. I believe very much in that. I believe that everyone is entitled to share, and especially out loud in public. I believe that. I believe that, it's called, there's actually a speech term about this that I've taught over the years. I actually really strongly believe in it. However, in terms of my own thinking, although everyone is free to say whatever they want, in terms of development, and I think do a lot of it, I want to go on record, and I think the advocates play a great role in their public conversation, but I tend not to be persuaded by them. I am persuaded by the resonance of the people who live in the districts where the development is occurring. So when I'm in Homewood, I'm going to be persuaded by the residents who live in Homewood. When I'm in Larimer, it's funny, you know, when I did, we did Choice, which is, some say, one of the greatest projects of affordable housing in the city, there were advocates who were against Choice up until the time we submitted it. I didn't listen to them because, well, they didn't live in the community. I tend not to listen to people who don't live in the community, who do not have skin in the game. And sometimes I'm, the last thing is, I do understand, I do understand representing the districts I represent, that people are in pain. And so, because sometimes I'm the only person they see, and they have to expose, they have to express their pain, and so they sometimes express it toward me because I'm there. You know, if you're mad, I don't know if you've been, some of you have been mad, I'm married 35 years, sometimes I get mad, and I fuss at my wife, not because I'm mad at her because she's the only one in the house, right? I gotta fuss at somebody, and she's there, and so she's close, and so I fuss at her. And so if you come to my community, sometimes you'll hear folk fuss at me, not because they may or may not like me, but mostly because they're mad and hurt, and they have no one else to talk to and talk about, so they yell at me, and I listen because, well, that's part of my job, too. So this proposal, the zone change, we are going to, I'm going to agree to it. It's important not only for Shadyside, it's important for Larimer, it's important for Homewood, it's important for Lincoln-Lemington. It is the closest shopping area to them. But we're going to spend the next year, eight months, something along with that, I'm going to spend the rest of the session in great detail, laying out the inequities of this city in great details. And when those people who come out and want to steal resources from the communities I represent, I'm going to, in great detail, show both their communities, both their, where they live, where they choose to live, where they, what the resources of those communities are, not only because it's great, it's fair and just, that's beyond that. I think Councilman Lavelle says it better than me, it's what's best for the city. Our city will not grow, it will not prosper, as long as it's doing this backward thinking of trying to rob resources from at-risk communities and at-need communities. It won't grow, it won't prosper. God won't bless it. And so we're going to go on this two-year discussion in great detail publicly, no more backroom deals, no more wink, wink, nought, nought, let's pass it, and then we'll go back and steal the money and give it to affluent communities. I will not allow that to occur, not on my watch, not on my time, not here, not now. We're going to have in great conversations every dollar spent, every time we, the same time we spent two hour talking about natural gas, we're going to spend twice that amount of time talking about every dollar that's spent, and if it's not going equitably, we're going to have that conversation, I promise you that. And so I'm sorry to use this moment for this conversation, that's not, this is not the moment for that, but I want to lay out my viewpoint, straight down the line. This new store will be helpful, it will be, you know, I walked to it, it's walking distance from my home, walking distance from many of our district, but certainly is the go-to store, and so putting 15% affordable housing, great. Putting new shelter, great. And the community has, you know, it's a meeting at Calvary, it was, you know, a great, one of the meetings was at Calvary, it was a great meeting, and everyone has their opinion. Sometimes, I think, one of my mentors in this work, Malik Bangston, said to me when we were at Calvary, he said, you know, sometimes, Rev, if no one gets everything they want, then you pretty much have done the right thing. If everybody gets some of what they want and no one gets exactly what they want, sometimes you pretty much know you've done the right thing. And in this development, I think pretty much you've done the right thing, and so let's pass it today and keep having this conversation.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So, councilwoman, I'll simply add that when the Shop &amp; Save in the Hill closed, we also began trying to figure out what a resident's going to do for access to food. We did explore with Giant Eagle having a local drop-off center. The problem with that was, and I'm not, and your constituency is slightly different, but I just want to give you my experience, the problem with that was a lot of those who needed to utilize it were seniors. And so getting to and fro, lack of transportation, not necessarily having a car to haul bags in and out, and having one or two times where Giant Eagle was willing to come, was problematic. Ultimately, we ended up with Giant Eagle actually becoming willing to develop for free to any resident in the Hill District. And so I would advocate that in your conversations with Giant Eagle, that you talk about that for those citizens, especially the portions that live in Reverend Burgess's district. We also ended up, and I can get the information for you, working with a fresh food initiative that brings a truck to the Shop &amp; Save Plaza every week for others to have also access to fresh vegetables and things of that nature on-site so they can pick it up there, and I can get you that information as well. But I do thank you for your leadership and all that you've done to bring a very complex development forward and, as Rev said, service the vast majority of those who are in need. Any further discussion? With none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That takes us to the Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Reverend Burgess.
Bill number 156, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Digital Harbor Foundation to expand REC2TEC program into Jefferson Recreation Center and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $10,000.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That takes us to the Innovation, Performance, and Assets Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger.
Bill number 203, resolution, amending resolution 730 effective November 6, 2019, authorizing the mayor and director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to revise the not-to-exceed funding amount and to clarify the leasing process.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Conversation, one, two, three, four, five. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is approved. That takes us to our last committee of the day, Enter Governmental Affairs chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill number 19, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street.
Question to, hold one week?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week. That takes us to our last bill of the day, Bill 141.
Bill 141, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street.
Question to, hold one week?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week. That takes us to the end of our agenda. We do have some meeting announcements. This afternoon, there will be sessions at 1:00 PM and 1:30. Councils will hold a briefing on OMB legislation, Bills 120 and 121. Is there any conversation for members? Seeing none, motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
移到 Second.
Second. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.[1747.32]